Can you hear me now? My microphone's moving. We're good. Thank you. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the December 1st, 2022? Regular meeting minutes and are there any suggested amendments to those? There are no suggested amendments on obtain a motion. To approve the regular meet minutes from December 1st, 2022 is written.
So moved.
Moved by Manley, seconded by Crew. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Our first order of business is the continuation of a preliminary site plan. Review for first day school supply, which is at 2659 Center Road. Do we have representative of the applicant? Perfect. Would you like to speak? I'll share my screen.
Good evening. Joel Copley. 309 Monroe Street, Monroeville, Ohio. I'm with Janata and Herner. Mike could not attend tonight, so I don't think that'll be a problem, but wanted to make sure that you you knew that. He had another obligation, so. The last. Time we met. Our site plan was. Short of the required parking. For the building addition that's proposed. One of the alternatives available to us in the code is for shared parking with adjacent properties. Now. Mike has a purchase agreement in place with RBS. Which is the adjacent property to the Southwest. Highlighted in blue on this on this plan. That had. Been bantered about and talked about for for several years now. And. Is now coming to fruition, so there's a purchase agreement signed and in place, they're in the process of doing due diligence. The identification survey is complete, the building inspections complete and the environmental assessments complete. So there has been quite a bit of progress. The the purchase isn't official and that it's not. Registered at the county and all of that just yet, but we we wanted to attend this meeting. And let you know the direction that this is going and conversation was with Tom was that. We could ask for board approval contingent upon the final paperwork. You know, in submitted to the county. So this tally. Yeah, in blue, we're looking to share 37 spaces with the RBS property. You know, so in essence, the agreement would be between first day and first day. Or Mr. Meadows and Mr. Meadows. Once the sale goes through. If you've all had a chance to review this worksheet, I won't. Go through the math. But if you have any questions, I'm of course glad to talk through it.
So just to recap what happened in November, they came before us and we reviewed the final, the preliminary site planning, excuse me. And it met all of the criteria except for the parking concern that was raised. They just did not have enough parking within the the code requires for warehousing, one space for every 1,000 square feet. So when you look at the amount versus square footage, plus they do have some office space in there. That's where you arrived at the 98 total spots and they just could not achieve that within this. This one subplot, so there's section 9.5 allows for shared parking. The the parcel doesn't actually technically have to be even owned by the same. Party, so the fact that the transaction is not. Finalized yet is not a big deal. They do have to work out some sort of agreement that agreement does have to be reviewed by the township's legal council. To confirm that that is a binding agreement that allows for the shared parking. And once they have that, this can move forward. I forwarded this site plan to the the legal council, the township's legal council, which is the. Medina County Prosecutor's Office. We had several discussions on this to confirm because section 9.5, which is the shared parking section is a little convoluted. And. Two prosecutors at the prosecutor's office was involved in the discussions as well. And we've concluded that this proposal does appear to meet the requirements of the code. Again, so we can approve the preliminary site plan on the condition that they arrive at a binding agreement that's been approved by Medina. By, excuse me, by. The Hinkley Township's Legal Council, which is the Medina Prosecutor's Office. So the extra spots will be pulled from this site right here.
Nice pointer.
I figured I had to use it while we're here. I don't have to get out of my seat. It's quite convenient. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Appreciate it.
Just don't poke your eye out. Or hit me.
Or yours.
And just so you can see, this is an aerial image of the site that's in blue.
Correct.
And so the spots that they're pulling, they have extra spots more than what this building needs up front. So they have extra spots there and then they also had six additional spots in the back. To allow them to have enough parking spots to meet the requirements of the code for this building plus the new addition. That they're they're arriving at, so there will not be any shared parking per se in that. There's no deficiency in parking between these two sub lots, it's just that some. Well, parking for the one subplot is being pulled from another subplot. And Inspector Wilson was not able to attend tonight, but he's also reviewed this and feels comfortable with this. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll go through our requirements for preliminary plan and. We can probably move forward with the motion. Alright. I'll just quickly go through the submission requirements to confirm that they've been met. Property location map, yes, the location of existing structures within the development area and access points, yes. The general location of existing buildings, parking and access drive on parcels within 100 feet of the site. Yes, a topographic survey of the proposed development area with contour lines at two feet enter two foot intervals. Yes, that's not on this site that was previously submitted. Existing nature vegetation features wooded areas and large isolated trees, one foot or more in diameter, yes. Location of wetlands is depicted on delineation produced by professional wetland specialists licensed by the state of Ohio. The floodplain boundary and flood elevation is delineated by the federal federal emergency management agency rivers and streams and their related river. Or stream bank ponds and watercourses, yes, delineation of existing drainage patterns on the property, yes. Existing wells and well sites, that's not applicable. The general location of development areas identified by use, including any fee simple lots and restricted open spaces. If part of the proposed project. That's not really applicable, the general layout of proposed circulation system for vehicles and pedestrians. Other proposed public ways, access points and parking and service system, yes. A summary table showing the total acres of proposed development, the number of acres devoted to each type of use, including streets and open space and the number of dwelling units by type. Yes, proposed phases of the project is to be developed in stages indicating the phases during which common facilities are anticipated to be constructed, that's not applicable. The following for conservation developments, I'll just skip it because it's not applicable. Other reasonable information as the zoning commission may require in order to evaluate the general concept of proposed development. In the case of some subdivision view, the zoning commission reviews for zoning compliance only subdivision approval or disapprove. Disapproval or approval with modifications is determined by the Medina County Planning Commission, this is not something that has to go through the Medina County Planning Commission. The development should be designated to preserve the natural amenities of the site, for example, building location and placement should be developed. Consideration given to minimizing the removal of trees and change of topography, I don't think they're removing any trees, so they've done that. The development will result in a harmonious grouping of buildings within the proposed development and in relationship to existing and proposed uses on adjacent property. Yes, the development will have properly designated open spaces that meet the objectives of the township's master power. Master policy plan and the zoning resolution. Yes, so if there are no other concerns, I entertain a motion to prove approve. A preliminary amendment contingent upon approval of a binding agreement. With the Medina County Prosecutor's Office. For the shared parking situation.
So moved.
Moved by Marzullo.
Second.
Seconded by Crew. We'll go ahead and do a roll. Fisher, yes?
Yes.
Crew, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Engelmann?
Yes.
Preliminary plan has been approved. They are technically supposed to come back for a final site plan. There is nothing additionally that we would see in a final site plan, and so we do have the option under chapter 11. To waive the final site plan. And I do suggest that in this case, we waive it and the zoning department is in agreement that there would be no. Other reason to have a final site plan, so. There are no other concerns, I would recommend. That we enter that we make a motion waiving the final site plan review.
And that is contingent upon there not being any changes, correct?
That would be the case anyway.
Correct. I'm fine. Yeah, I'll move.
Moved by Marzullo, seconded by Engelmann. We'll do a roll. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Engelmann?
Yes.
Perfect, so the requirement for a final site plan has been waived, so all that you have to do is. Obtain that work with your attorney to come up with the binding agreement. It's then got to be reviewed by the prosecutor's office, once they approve of that. Then the zoning department can issue the zone is true.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So there is no other old business, the only new business is that I would like to just have a very brief discussion of what our goals. Should be for for this year, what we would like to see. You know, what what progress we would like to to see made. I'm sure everyone's aware by now that the township trustees agree with us on all counts with respect to the map and zoning. The map and text amendments that we recommended, so the Buzzard's Cove. Section that be one section remains as be one. Town center is a B three and then the text amendments that we recommended were approved and actually today is the effective date. For all of the changes in the zoning resolution. So I know one of the items that I think certainly we had an interest in discussing further now. Is the Buzzard's Cove portion and whether we want to look into moving that to B two, B three or a new B four. Is that still of interest or is that not interesting longer?
So this is off topic in a sense, but I would really love. A fresh copy of the zoning resolution.
That was in my chair.
So multicolored at this point. That half the time I don't know what I'm looking at. But.
I second that.
With with that said.
Well, then we'll just do that now, so Suzanne asked me to find out how many people would like a hard new hard copy. Of it and how many people would just like electronically.
Copy.
Five copies. Perfect.
Leather bow. Just for you.
That's real leather.
So the. You'll fetch pages.
As far as. The the Buzzards Cove, you know, we can look at that. Again, I I I think it would still be worthwhile to discuss, okay, what? How how can we? Rain in but not impact that area as as much as possible? Let me. Rephrase it, how can we? Not impact it as much as as we want as as much as possible, but still make sure it. Is. Can only be developed in a way that is beneficial to the community.
Sure.
And and I know there's been a lot of talk of, well, there's the riparian setbacks, wetlands, it really can't be developed and. You're you're always amazed at what people can do when they when they have some ingenuity.
Interesting.
I would agree. On that topic.
I will say one topic that's recently come up. That we might want to look at is reappearance setbacks, that entire chapter. It's a little bit of a messy chapter and so it's something that we might want to look at. It's not something that too many people are interested in. But it. It it comes up frequently, there were two or three different. Instances that have been coming up for the zoning department this year, all with questions. Do we want to look at doing anything else with the B three? Do we want to look at design standards? Do we want to look at the setbacks? Do we want to? Or the B two, remember now that those are separated, we can change the setbacks, we can change the area of of that's allowed to be buildable. Because right now those are very much the same and we can separate it out. It's. I'll tell you, it, you know, I think that that's one that. You know. I I'm not so sure that we have the support for for strong design standards, but I do think it's something that. Might be useful for us to look at and just start to develop and thinking about. But I'm not opposed to not having that discussion right now.
Man, I just gave you that reference from City of Cincinnati so that people can look to see what. Really a well defined. Document of different types of architectural standards. But you know, is that someplace you want to go? I think if if you don't look and see what that is. You or you should at least look and see what that is to help decide whether that's a path you want to go down.
And what I what I will say is we've had a fair number of transactions occur with real estate within town center right now. And so there is movement. With what's happening in town center, so do we want to get in front of that, are we okay with what the set? What the code currently says for town center? Because I do anticipate that in the next five years, 10 years, we're going to see some some development. Of town center.
So maybe this is kind of a rhetorical question, but we've. The B three is known as historic town center. So I guess. What what? What do we want to accentuate about the historical aspect of town center? I mean, is there anything in particular because? You know, the the range of architecture currently probably spans 150 years. So we've encompassed, you know, all kinds of styles, whatever was the prevalent style at the time. So you know, if you're going to do something, I mean, what makes it? Historical? Do design standards make it historical? I mean, is it the fact that those buildings are there? And that's it because they're still there from the time they were built. So you know, trying to kind of. Make sense of. Do we need to have design standards yet? You know, how does that tie into a historical aspect or what is the historical part of it?
Again, these are just topics for us to start discussion discussion on and my hope was if we identify two or three topics, I would really like to subdivide that this year. And have one member that's passionate about whatever the topic is, start to work on. A proposal for us to at least build a discussion upon and then we can do nothing with it, you know? Just like, you know, we we spent a long time with short term housing, we got some definitions out of it. I think it was a very worthwhile discussion for us to have and then we decided it's just not worth moving on any further than that at this time and that's a. That's okay, too, not everything has to lead to a direction of. Let's incorporate something into the book, can be an open discussion to decide whether it makes sense or not. Mr. Manley, is there are there any topics that you would like to see us work on this year?
Not really, just. Just things that mean just general discussion, I think. Town center, but I think one of the things. We have to get closer to when we're going to get water and a few things there, how this is going to play out. I hesitate to have design. Create designs. For an area that. That people don't want to spend the money on or developers or whatever. Because we really get carried away, I know there's one school of thought that we should be developing. The historical district now. It's similar to downtown Medina or something of that nature, and it's just kind of ridiculous. Because of the expense we'd be putting on future development. Again, with no water. Just not much we could do, I mean, I know most of the business owners, as you know, and. We to, you know, they're 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 just, they're just making it. Now stands. I just, I'm not sure, and as far as the Buzzard's Cove, the the whole key is to protect the neighborhood there. And get Buzzard's Cove to stay within the limits that they are currently and not expand and I don't know how you do that without. You know, picking on a particular business. I'm open to any discovery, listen, any any. General discussion.
Well, if we deemed it historic downtown. What what sets it apart from other business area other than it's downtown? I mean, isn't that why we named it the historic district? Right? Or some kind of.
Well, if you go back and look, it's in the center, kind of the center historic center. Well over 100 years, I'm thinking.
Right.
I don't know if you could go back into 1825, but I know you can get back into the late 1800s, because I've seen pictures and maps.
Sure.
So it's kind of been the historic center.
Yeah, and I think there was one of the townships and you might remember the name of the township I looked at because you said you were from that area. For the design centers down near Cincinnati somewhere up one of the townships. And it was interesting, their.
Westchester?
Yeah, yeah. It.
Because they're going through a massive boom right now.
Right, and I even called the zoning chair down there. They went through a lot of changes when they put their design structures in place because. Because of the new materials that they have now today, so before, you know, they had to use a certain wood. Materials on the outside of the. The homes and or the buildings and now they can use other materials because of updating. But they said that. It's it's very. It's going to entail a lot more than what we think because you're going to have to have review boards and you're going to have to have inspections and you're going to have to have. A bunch of other things that are we ready for it?
So Westchester is probably five times.
Oh, it's way.
Greater than Hinkley, I mean, you can't even compare.
It used to be all rural farmland and then it just exploded.
Yeah, but not not in the way Hinkley is exploding, I mean, they exploded commercial.
Yes.
Hinkley is still.
The Lakota School District is now, I think, one of the largest school districts in all of Ohio, so very different. Um, I think, you know, my goal or my thinking on this is. As people reface their buildings anyway, as they start to consider doing rehabilitation of some of these buildings. It'd be nice to provide some sort of guidance for what we would like to see them do. Not to force them to make any changes. But to say, if you're going to make changes, we would like you to go this route because we want to start to restore. This area. To have some sort of look to it, whether it's the Western Reserve or. You know, brick, whatever it is, to start to encourage people to, as you're going to invest anyway. Invest in something that helps create some sort of character for this town.
I'm I'm. Fine with that.
But again, is it is it a topic that we want to look at? That's all that we would be doing at this point, is it a topic that we want to explore?
I think I would hold off on it personally. I mean, if. If I might add, I mean. Perhaps a a topic that would be maybe more interest than that, tell me if this even makes sense. But we talk a lot, you know, and just like Buzzard's Cove, trying to keep. The community. Not. Over commercialized and you know, we heard talk about keeping things rural, well, I don't know if it's really rural, but. I guess maybe spacious would be the word I would use. Whether there's things that. We could look at that would allow. Residential properties. To continue to maintain a rural look and I guess. Is, can we do overlay? Zones like an. I'll just throw out like an R four. That overlays an R two district. That. Would not be divisible. I'm, you know, I'm just kind of throwing this out as just general.
I'm not, I'm I'm not sure I understand, but the overlay would.
Understand.
Would it be, because if an R one has, for instance, two acres, you can't have an overlay that changes.
I'm sorry, R one, right.
So what would you overlay that for? Would it?
Not R two, R one.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Well. So some people who have, say, 20 acres. Or maybe 40 acres and down the road. You know, maybe put part of that land into a conservancy district, a conservancy like Western Reserve. What if that option? Is not something that that person wants to do? What if perhaps, you know, maybe they have seven acres or they have 20 acres. But they would like to ensure that it does not get subdivided.
Well, they could do that themselves, they could put a deed restriction on the property that says it can't be subdivided. This seven acres can only have one, one home on it, they they already can do that, that wouldn't be a zoning. Require.
Okay.
Right, or?
Well, I suppose, right, I mean, and basically that would boil down to be about the same thing. So do people do that?
Oh, yeah, the the gentleman that lives right adjacent to the new senior thing, he's got all kinds of restrictions, in fact, his property after his death can never be used for commercial.
Oh, okay.
The gentleman.
Yeah.
He's got a whole list of things that cannot be used for. And so there's deep restrictions on it.
And that's what that's what a homeowner could do, they could put a deed restriction on it and that's what is useful.
Yeah. I want to just throw it out. You know, I guess in terms of. Discussion, that's all.
No, it's purpose.
But I do like the concept of trying to remain spacious.
Well, you face, you know, I guess, well, you know, but.
I don't know if that's something we can really control.
Well, I mean.
Oh, no, but it's not something that we would want to control, it would be at the option of the property owner.
Correct.
So, you know. You know. Kind of make it more. More of something for people to consider. You know, that's out there, them looking for. You know, change. You know, that's out there, them looking for, you know, changing. The R one to minimum, you know, a different minimum, which is greater, which would be hard to do because. It'd be a lot of grandfathering involved.
I I have a couple other thoughts. One, one thing I would like to look at potentially, if this commission agrees. Is I would like to revisit conservation developments and in particularly the front setback, front yard setbacks on those. I think that. Saw some of the newest subdivision. I think that the houses are too close to the road. I would like to see them push back a little bit. It's one of the things that was brought up through the steering commission, if you remember, and then it was a discussion that was brought up, steering committee. And it was brought up uh, by the consultant that they had as well as. You know, look at your front yard setbacks. That's a possibility. And so we would look at that for for conservation developments. Another thing, and this is something that I think Ms. Crew mentioned before, I've seen some zoning resolutions that have. Language for earthen mounds. And I think that you expressed concern about these developments that are putting earthen mounds. Now, some people think that that looks great because it conceals homes, but some people don't think they look natural. And so that's something that we could consider is. Whether we allow those earthen mounds, what, you know, heights, different things about those. That's something that I've seen in some other texts. Uh, that could consider. It's just. Yeah, you know, I I would like a direction for what topics we would like to see. This year.
Mark, we had a question. Could you, if you're done sharing your screen?
Oh.
Go back to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Marcus D, if you're aware, I don't know what. Your relationship is with the B Z A, but is there any particular thing that comes in front of them constantly that? Maybe there's a part of the code that has to be cleaned up a little bit or modified at some point in time?
I've done had conversations on, where I'm having a meeting with Joe next week anyway, so I'll ask her if there are any topics that she thinks that we should. Discuss. Joe Colavero is the chair of the B Z A. And I'll also touch base again with the. With the zoning department. But again, one of the the. The one that's come up most recently, most commonly is riparian setbacks, so.
So far, to me, the one that makes the sense to take a look at is perhaps. Looking at the uh, the setbacks though. Along all the waterways to make sure we're doing this right. And and trying to straighten around any place where it appears to be a double or triple meaning or intent. And getting all this riparian stuff in different order. I I'm aware of a few situations that have popped up over the years.
All right. I think we can just leave it at that and and we'll, unless there's anything else, I think we'll we'll just adjourn and we'll plan on. Um, you know, our our goals for this year, we'll look at the the parcels that are around Buzzard's Cove and look at whether we want to. Rezone those into another business district or keep them as is. And then we'll also just look at the riparian section. And then if anyone in the public has comments that they would like to suggest, they're welcome to it. Um, we'll get to public comments in a second. Um, outside of that. The the only thing I have to report is the next Regulator's Zoning Commission meeting will be February second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we'll have hard copies of the new resolution at that time. Uh, I've got nothing further. Ms. Crew?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Marzullo, nothing. Mr. Manley?
Nothing.
The single man?
Nothing.
Perfect. There is no other business, any public comments?
Uh, Richard Pearl King Road, with respect to the B Z A. Then you might specifically ask him if they would like some help with light pollution. And. One subject I would suggest you revisit is the definition of automobile service stations. You. Proposed definition for electric vehicle charging station, but maybe you'd consider looking at those two.
Somewhere in here, right near the top. They have, this is the. Sedona City Code for Outdoor Lake Control. It's one of the things that I thought about discussing a year ago, so I appreciate you bringing them back up.
We should do a site visit on that.
It would be nice right now.
If it's the Sedona you're thinking of.
Any other public comments? Perfect. Trustee Ashrow, anything? Perfect. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-five P M.
So moved.
Moved by Crew. Seconded by Marzullo.